All right, being seven o'clock, we'll call the common council meeting to order. Will you stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance in part of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll call been taken? Correct. All right, move on to adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Motion's been made by Fred Zoggs, seconded by Lori Dean. Any corrections or additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of March ninth in March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one council minutes?
So move. Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Besaw. Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried by all. Mr. Morak, authorization to pay bills?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move we pay bills in amount of one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Mr. O'Connell. Pay the bills in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Any additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. And Tom, one more time.
Eighteen, not a little.
He's got it.
There we go.
Motion carried by all. Public input. Hearing none, carry on. To standing in special committees, we'll start with Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works met on Monday, April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, four thirty. Meeting called to order. Agenda adopted. First item is wastewater treatment plant update. We read through that, there are no questions. And the next item was a public hearing and information session on special assessments for sanitary and water lateral rehabilitation for the two thousand twenty-one Werner Allen Boulevard reconstruction project. Mr. Barrington opened the meeting, public hearing at four thirty-three. Mr. Hirth led an informational session on the Werner Allen reconstruction project. The city will assess adjacent properties for sanitary and water lateral replacements. Several questions from the public were asked and answered, no comments were given. Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing at five eleven. Next item was review and recommended council, a final resolution authorizing sanitary and water utility improvement and leveling, special assessments against the benefited property owners for the Werner Allen Boulevard construction. The board reviewed a final assessment resolution detailing that the city will be assessing properties for water and sewer lateral replacements. The drafted resolution proposed allowing the property owners to defer payments for ten years at a one percent interest. Motion made and seconded to authorize the draft resolution. We had motion to approve the contract to Northeast Asphalt for reconstruction sections of Werner Allen Boulevard and for Shauno Street. Next, we execute an agreement with DTAC LLC in the amount of eighteen thousand for brush disposal services. Those will be brought to council tonight. I move to adopt a final resolution authorizing sanitary and water utility improvements and levying special assessments against property owners for the Werner Allen Boulevard reconstruction project.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Barrington, who was that seconded by?
Me.
Zoggs. For the adoption of final resolution authorizing sanitary and water utility improvement and levying special assessment against the benefited property owners for the Werner Allen Boulevard reconstruction project. Any additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried unanimously.
Next, I move to award a contract to Northeast Asphalt Incorporated for reconstruction of sections of Werner Allen Boulevard, Shauno Street.
Second.
Motion been made by Barrington, seconded by Ms. Dean. To award a contract to Northeast Asphalt for reconstruction of sections of Werner Allen Boulevard and Shauno Street. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Tom?
They're pressed down hard.
Motion carried by all.
Next, I move to execute an agreement with DTAC LLC in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for brush disposal services.
Second.
Motion been made by Ms. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Execute an agreement with DTAC LLC in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for brush disposal services. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried unanimously.
That is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Move on to finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, April seventh, at four thirty PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. Motion was made by O'Connell and seconded by Foshee to recommend the council deeding the property at four oh one South Pearl Street to the New London Library Museum. The property was originally purchased by Ron Steinhorst and intended for inclusion in the library project. Motion carried eight zero. City Administrator Hirth led a discussion on the reorganization of Parks and Recreation Department of Public Works position. Conceptually, the finances committee agreed with the concept of splitting the Parks Director and Public Works Director and reorganizing responsibilities of each. This is just the first discussion conceptually, and Hirth will continue to work on the details of the end proposal. Motion was made by O'Connell and seconded by Barrington to recommend to council resolution authorizing support of a strong state and local partnership with shared revenue critical services. The purpose of this resolution, to show support in writing to provide to the League of Wisconsin municipalities as they begin discussion with legislators to support an increase in the shared revenue program. Motion carried eight zero. Finance Director Judy Ratkey led a discussion on the American Rescue Plan. This is the money that has been, that has and will be allocated to the city of New London by the federal government. There are guidelines on how this funding can be spent, and currently those are being clarified. Mrs. Ratkey will continue monitoring this payment and required spending guidelines and keep the committee updated. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the monthly financial reports. The financial directory report was discussed. There were no questions and answers, there being no public comment or further business. Meeting adjourned at five thirty-one PM. The next regularly scheduled finance committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on May fifth at four thirty PM. Then I move that we deed the property at four oh one South Pearl Street to the New London Library Museum.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Zoggs. Consider deeding the property at four zero one South Pearl Street to the New London Library and Museum. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
Then I move we adopt the resolution authorizing support of a strong state and local partnership with shared revenue of critical services.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Mr. Barrington to adopt resolution authorizing support of a strong state and local partnership, shared revenue, critical services. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Then move we approve the license list where April is presented.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Mr. Herter. To approve the license list. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
That's all I have for finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Moving on to Park and Recreation, Mr. Besaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The April Park and Rec Committee met on Monday, April fifth. Meeting was called to order at five twenty-seven, following the Board of Public Works meeting. Motion was moved to approve the agenda, motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Discuss of sculpture art in the parks. Tony Hendrickson of the Wolf River Art League led a discussion on proposals to create sculpture art to be displayed in city property. The idea is to turn garbage collected from the annual river cleanup and turn it into sculptured art. One location mentioned to place art is on the concrete pad at River Trail Park. Seasonal art was preferred to start out with. Hendrickson will return in the future to bring more information on the types of art that will be proposed. No motion was made at this time. Consider a recommendation for contracts, awards to replace the police department roof and sections of the London Municipal Building roof. Chad Harth provided bid tabulations for roof replacement at the police department and municipal buildings. The buildings are separated into separate contracts. Northeastern Roofing Incorporated provided the lowest bid for the roof replacement of the police department, and Wynart Roofing provided the lowest bid for the municipal The motion was moved to recommend that council award the contract to Northeastern Roofing Incorporated in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty thousand, or sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for the roof replacement at the London Police Department. The motion was carried by all. Move to recommend that council award the contract to Wynart Roofing in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars for roof replacement at the London Municipal Building. Motion was carried by all. Those motions will be both brought to council for approval. Review a recommendation to replace docks and install security cameras at the Riverside Boat Launch. The council received a proposal to replace existing docks, add a new ADA kayak launch, and install security cameras at Riverside Boat Launch. The estimated cost came to a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Funding for the project will be financed from the boat launch fund, which currently sets at about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Move to authorize staff to spend up to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand on dock replacements and ADA kayak launch and security cameras at Riverside Boat Launch. Motion was carried by all. That'll also be brought to council. Discuss and consider for action updates to the COVID-nineteen restriction for public recreational facilities. The committee reviewed previous restrictions on public property due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, dealt with the development of the vaccine and other efforts, and it was time to begin lifting many of the limitations. In summary, all attendance restrictions will be lifted for outdoor rentals and special events. Considerations and limits will be considered on a case-by-case basis for recreational programs and the saunas at the pool to encourage social distancing. Move to approve updates to the COVID-nineteen restrictions for public recreational facilities effective April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Motion was carried by all. That'll also be brought to council. Consider restrictions on smoking in public parks. Committee had an open discussion on restricting smoking in public parks. Consensus was to possible restrict smoking during public events and have designated smoking areas. Chad Harth will consult Chief Leader on his opinion and revisit the topic at a next meeting. No motion was made at this time. Director's memo was discussed in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Committee members reported there was none presented. Future agenda items, sculpture art on city parks and property, smoking in public parks. There being no further discussion, move to adjourn. Motion was moved to adjourn at six twenty-one, motion was carried by all. I would look for council to approve, to recommend the council award the contract to Northeast Roofing Incorporated in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty for the roof replacement at the London Police Department.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Besaw, and I did not catch the second.
Herter, I think.
Second by Mr. Herter. To award a contract to Northeastern Roofing, Inc. in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for the roof replacement at the New London Police Department. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Fred? Oh, Fred's not.
You vote for him? If I abstain or...
Can I just abstain here?
Um. Yeah.
Okay, we're just gonna abstain, Fred, to keep this going.
Motion passing, nine yes and one abstain.
I would move to council to recommend the council award the contract to Wynart Roofing in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars for the roof replacement at the London Municipal Building.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Barrington. Did you get a second?
I got three. Dean?
Mr. Barrington this time.
Barrington?
Mr. Barrington. To award a contract to Wynart Roofing in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars for the roof replacement at the New London Municipal Building. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Tom, you need to confirm.
Yeah, confirm. Confirm.
Motion pass. Eight yes, one abstention.
Nine.
Nine yes, one abstention, my bad.
I would, I would move to authorize the staff to spend up to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand on dock replacement and ADA kayak launch and security cameras at the Riverside Boat Launch.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Besaw and seconded by Mr. Herter to authorize staff to spend up to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the boat launch fund on dock replacement and ADA kayak launch and security cameras at the Riverside Boat Launch. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine yes, one abstain.
And I would look for council to consider action on updates to the COVID-nineteen restrictions for public recreational facilities.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Besaw, seconded by Mr. Dorsey to approve updates to the COVID-nineteen restrictions for the public recreation facilities effective April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine yes, one abstain.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besaw. We'll move on right into the Planning Commission, and you're up again.
Excuse me. Planning Commission met on April tenth. Meeting was called to order at five o'clock. Those in attendance were Chairman Besaw, Jay Bessett, Sue Steingrabber, Jamie Walbrook, Donna Gabbert, and Mayor Mark Herter. Others in attendance were City Administrator Chad Harth, Dave Dorsey, Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator David Vincent, Ken Jawowski, and Eric Fowler with the Cedar Corporation, and Randy and Ingrid Retzloff. The agenda was introduced, item number six being removed per the petition's request. Item number four was moved to follow number eight to allow more time for discussion. Bessett motion, made a motion, seconded by Steingrabber to adopt the agenda with the changes as suggested. Motion was carried by all. Walbrook pointed out a correction for the February twenty-fifth, twenty-one minutes. As the minutes stated, motion carried by all on the three twelve Elm Street agenda item. Walbrook stated that he had abstained from the vote on this item. The correction was received, and a motion was made by Walbrook and seconded by Steingrabber to accept the minutes with the amended change. Motion was carried by all. Randy Retzloff provided a conceptual plan for future development of property along Beckford Road. This was an initial informational proposal to see if the committee would consider a future zoning request to change parts of the parcel for multi-family housing. Several comments were made with positive feedback to move forward with a formal proposal for consideration. A certified survey map, CSM, was defended for dividing a parcel at five twenty Spur Road by Dorothy Petit to allow for a sale from an adjacent property owner. Motion by Donna Gabbert, seconded by Mayor Mark Herter. Motion was carried all to approve the CSM for the petitioner. The commission reviewed a CSM to modify the right-of-way at the Tribet Finance for the replacement of a business sign. The proposal for the right-of-way change would follow the contour of the roadway at one oh one Wapaka Street. The city would maintain easement rights relating to utilities in this location. A motion to approve the CSM was made by Mayor Herter and seconded by Gabbert. Motion to approve was carried by all. Jen Guskowski and Eric Fowler from Cedar Corporation were in attendance and provided dialogue pertaining updates to the city, New London's comprehensive plan. Questions were discussed regarding the existing and future zoning needs and homework given to commission members for recommendations on how they may want to amend the document. A review of future agenda items was discussed. The next Planning Commission meeting is Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Motion to adjourn by Gabbert and seconded by Bessett. Meeting adjourned by Chairman Besaw at six nineteen. Motion was carried by all. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Besaw. Moving along to Economic Development Committee, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, March thirtieth, at four thirty PM in the city council chambers and via Zoom. The February twenty-third minutes were accidentally omitted from the committee packet and will be reviewed at the next meeting. Bill Bishop invited a local business owner to come and share some business success stories for the committee. Unfortunately, the individual could not attend, so the topic will be forwarded to a future meeting. Semple and Hirth led a discussion continued from the previous month regarding a social media marketing plan. The plan highlights different types of content that is used to promote tourism, city services, quality of life, and business promotion. Semple provided some examples of video content that he has created and Facebook impressions resulting from those advertising efforts. Additional discussion took place on the types of marketing efforts the city can continue to promote and capitalize on. The committee agreed with the plan and will review the marketing results on a regular basis. Esmond motion and seconded by Foshee to approve the social media marketing plan as presented. Motion carried by all. Hirth presented documents showing recommendations for the two thousand twenty-one economic development goals. This year's goals will be streamlined a bit as the city administrator will be focusing more throughout the year with staff reorganization and training. Motion was made by Esmond and seconded by Wolf to accept the goals as presented. Motion carried by all. April Pitsky provided business updates. MJ Treasures is a new business at one oh six West North Water Street, sharing space with Mallet Travel, offering travel accessories, swimsuits, resort wear, baby, kids clothes, books, and gifts. Effective April first, QPS, New London Employment Agency, will be relocating from one oh three West North Water Street to five oh four West North Water Street. A ribbon-cutting ceremony was held Thursday, April first, at twelve PM for the next level USC Ultimate Sports Complex located at eight sixty-five Surprise Ending Road. Thompson asked if there are updates to the sale of the Grand Theater, expressed concerns about the building deteriorating, and pointed out that a theater in Oshkosh is owned by the city and leased out to a private company to operate. The committee will consider this topic at a future meeting. Administrator Hirth reported on progress with the parcel sale to Midwest Properties in the industrial park and reported on several upcoming residential sub-development opportunities in the near future. The committee reviewed speakers and agenda items for future meetings. There was no public comment. The committee reorganized, recognized, and thanked Chairman Mark for his leadership on the Economic Development Committee as this was his final meeting as an element. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at four thirty PM. Then you also have copies of the Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation in your packet, and there you have my final report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. With that said, we'll move on to minutes and reports, and that should stand as red as they're in your packets. Moving on from that, the reports of officers and recent events and announcements to the public. Starting off with the mayor Arbor Day proclamation. Celebrate Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating, cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mark Herter, Mayor of the City of New London, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one as Arbor Day. In this case of the New London, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. This evening, we are saying goodbye to Alder Person's Tom O'Connell, Lori Dean, and Mike Pinch. Tom has been in Alder Person since May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-seven. Lori, since May first, two thousand eight. And Mike, since April second, twenty nineteen. As well as their normal council duties, Tom has been a very involved member of the Finance and Personnel Committee. Lori has been a very active, has been very active on the Park and Recreation Committee, while Mike shared his talents on Public Works and Economic Development Committees. Their combined years of service to the city totals thirty-nine years of experience. We truly appreciate your time and expertise that you have shared while being on the council and individual committees. This dedication contributed towards the improvement quality of life for our citizens. Your time spent in conservation conversations with your respective constituents resulted in maintaining well-informed Alder Merrick districts. Thank you again, Tom, Lori, and Mike, for your years of service. It has been a pleasure to work with you. With that being said, we have a little something for each of you. Okay. Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Pinch, I'm gonna ask you to come around here so you can get on camera. To all those present, let it be known that David R. Morak began his political career as alderman twenty-two years ago on September fourteenth, nineteen-ninety-nine, and during that time, he has loyally served his constituents of the Fifth District, and whereas he was chosen unanimously, May tenth, twenty-sixteen, to April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, by his fellow alderment persons to the position of council president. Dave has spent countless hours in meetings, also serving as chairman and vice chairman of the Finance and Personnel Committee. And whereas Dave was instrumental in starting the Economic Development Committee, serving as its chairman from its inception on March twenty-fourth, two thousand nine, to the present day, always with an eye towards New London's betterment and the welfare of its citizens. And whereas it is our hope his retirement will be spent doing the things he loves, such as spending time with family, fishing, and deer hunting at his woodland cottage, sharing his knowledge of accounting through his teaching, and a little recreational gambling. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Herter, Mayor of the City of New London, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for your dedication and commitment to the city, and congratulate Dave on the occasion of his retirement from the City of New London, and wish him the best and continued success in his retirement and future endeavors. Dave, can you meet me in the center, please?
I can.
Might give you that first. Shake your hand and...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We appreciate your service.
I just wanna say as long as I'm up here, I wanna thank the council. I think I worked with a great group over the many years, very proud of the work that we accomplished and so forth. And I would really like to thank the city staff. I think we have a great staff that's doing a super job. And I wanna thank the residents of the Fifth District for giving me the opportunity to serve the city of New London. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, I would like to remind all council members current and the new council elect that next Tuesday to twentieth, I would like you all here in attendance in our organizational meeting, please. Thank you. Moving on to Utility Manager, Mr. Bessett.
Thank you, Your Honor. New London Utilities Commission decided to cancel the annual recycling event for this year due to COVID concerns. On March twentieth, we had a drunk driver clip a guy wire in front of the utilities, sending that up into the wires. The accident caused Werner sub-breaker to operate and our main breaker sub to operate twice. We had a streetlight wire on High Street burn up on the twenty-fifth. Crews found an underground fault and fixed the damage on the twenty-sixth. On the thirty-first, water crews struck a gas main at Zachary and Lucas in East Ridge subdivision. It was found that concrete crews working on the driveway had erased the marks prior to the water department arriving. Well number five rehab construction has been completed. On April second, municipal well found a bad bearing on the motor during the work. Municipal sent the motor for repairs, and the well can be put back into service after that is finished. On April seventh, the utilities had its rate hearing with the PSC. When that is approved, residents could see an increase in their electric rates as soon as May first. Electric crews have started replacing bad poles again this year. Last year, our crews did an exceptional job replacing eighty-six poles. This year, we still have seventy-nine on the list to be replaced. We have an opening for a water operator, and I urge anyone interested to apply for that. The deadline for the applications is April thirtieth. On April fifteenth, the utilities will begin the disconnection of service for non-payment customers. I urge all customers to reach out to the utilities and make arrangements with our office to avoid disconnection. And I would like to have a special thank you for Mosquito Hill and Pat Fisher for their assistance in helping us with an owl at the utilities that got tangled in some fishing line last week. I didn't really know where to turn. I called the DNR, I called several people, and Mosquito Hill responded to me within about a half an hour. And I would also like to take that time to remind the fishermen just to do their part and pick up their fishing line whenever possible. Next week, the water department will begin flushing hydrants, and Matt Abba has completed one year of service with the New London Utilities. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bessett. Move on to Chief of Police, Mr. Slater, your honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Luke Curtis completed three years at the New London Police Department, and I'd also like to thank John Lee for ten years of service with the New London Police and Fire Commission. He decided to retire after the last meeting. His term was coming up here in May anyways, but anyways, I'd like to thank him for his time that he's put forward with the police department. We also have hired two new people over at the police department, Trent Martin as a officer and Megan Duke as a part-time dispatcher and a community service officer. So we're in training with both them right now, and hopefully within about two, three months, we'll have them ready for the road. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Director of Public Services and City Administrator, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. As many of you picked up in the meeting tonight, the council awarded the construction project to, for the Warner Allen Boulevard and Shano Street projects. These will be our major street reconstruction projects for two thousand twenty-one. If you couldn't pick up in the conversation, Warner Allen Boulevard will be resurfaced and spot repairs from Wolf River Avenue to Jennings Street, and then Shano Street, we're doing a one-block section from Cook Street to Beacon Avenue. Now that the contract is awarded, I'll be working on building the project page on the city's website, so as we get updates for the project, it'll be posted on there. I don't have a timeline for the projects yet, other than that they're scheduled to happen during the summer, during the off time when the school's not in session, just because of the proximity to Parkview and the middle school. So I don't have an exact start time yet, but they are scheduled for when school gets out of session. Just a reminder, everyone, that New London sirens will sound on Thursday, this Thursday, April fifteenth, at one forty-five and six forty-five for the statewide tornado drills. However, the National Weather Service will not sound out warnings for your phones or weather radios. Spring and brush pickup is scheduled starting April twenty-sixth and running through May fourteenth. Please check out the city's website for the map to show when we'll be picking up in those areas. Brush, we would like on the curb, perpendicular to the curb. The bundles no longer than six foot, and then the, anything for compost should be in the curb line, but don't put it in the curb line until we are scheduled for your area, not that they're, not that we get a big rain washout and it washes everything into the catch basins and plugs the catch basin. So if you could, please look at the city's website, check out the times when we are gonna be in your area, in those zones, and then place the stuff in the curb line during that time. For those who want to drop off brush or compost, just a reminder, we are no longer having access to the site behind Four Hill. That site is no longer available for brush and compost drop-off. We are only accepting those products at the wastewater treatment plant and city garage. You wanna come in on the Warner Allen gate there. The gate is open from seven A.M. to seven P.M. daily to drop off those materials. And a reminder, we do not accept construction materials, furniture, tires, or any other type of garbage materials. We have a problem with that, that people dropped off those things in the past, so we do not accept those non-brush compost items. Those type of things need to go to the county waste and recycling centers. We have a full-time park caretaker position open with the city. The closing date for that position is Thursday, April twenty-second. Those who are interested can submit an application on the city's website online. And the last but not least, and our recreation staff is getting ready to, getting things ready for our summer season. We expect that the summer program guide will be delivered from the printers and available in the next few weeks. So as we get ready for the summer session, everything should be planned as normal. Gender does have a lot of different creative ideas for just creating social distancing type aspects and considerations, but we are planning on running summer programming as normal, as best as normal for this summer. So if anybody's got any questions, they can call the, call the Park and Rec Department for those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirth. Where your chief, Mr. Wolfher?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just an update, we did receive our UTV that we, we did the fundraising for, and we did get an opportunity to actually utilize it on a MABUS call over in Dale. It worked very well, so just wanna thank everyone again for their donations on that piece of equipment.
Paul, I have. Thank you, Mr. Wolfher. And that concludes that portion of our common council. Like to move on to the closed session per nineteen-point-eight-five subsection one, subsection C, to evaluate the city administrator and review goals. Any other motion?
Your Honor, I move we go in a closed session per section nineteen-point-eight-five, subsection one, subsection C, to evaluate the city administrator and review votes.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington. Please cast your ballots.
Got a revote now. I think you got a revote.